Well, good evening and welcome to those here in attendance as well as those attending virtually. The Monday, June the ninth, two thousand twenty-five North Augusta City Council Study Session is called to order. And with that, I will turn it over to our City Administrator Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And as is the practice here on a study session evening, we'll have an agenda review, we'll have department details from our department heads, and then we'll go into our focus items, first being the development update, which is essentially a version of the update I gave at the chamber meeting in March. And then we'll have an update on utility billing system software. So with that, I think we should go ahead and move into our agenda items. We'll have a proclamation for Parks and Rec Month, which is July. And then we'll move into old business, which item number six on your agenda shows under Administration Ordinance Number two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, mending section twelve dash twenty-one, paragraph nine, related to hours for construction work second reading. So as a refresher, this was maintaining the current work hours Monday through Friday, but then adding work hours of nine to five on Saturday. Again, no construction activities on Sunday. But that's what we understood the guidance to be from the council, and council voted on it for first reading, so that'll be before the council has a second reading next week. And then we'll move into new business, and we have two items there in particular. One, turning under Engineering and Public Works Resolution Number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, authorizing professional engineering services contract for the Willowwick Creek stabilization. This is part of a much larger project that we have an NRRC grant for. But this is the start some engineering services and analysis for the Willowwick Creek, and which is part of a pretty run basin. So ultimately, we're going to have multiple council actions likely coming to you, but this will be the first of a few where we want to go ahead and award that. And again, we have the ability to tie into NRRC funding to handle that problem. And the next item for discussion will be under Planning and Development Resolution Number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-one, accepting a dedication for the water and sanitary sewer along with maintenance guarantee and cash deposit for Parker's Kitchen. As for the second Parker's Kitchen, so the first being the one on Jefferson Davis Highway, the second that we're going to, so this one is the one off Route twenty-five, so just south of exit five on I-20, there's a buildup there. So if you come off the exit, you go past the QT, that's where the Parker's Kitchen is, right near where the DMV site is, and the trailhead for the Pymato Parkway. And that's what that property resorts to. And again, that is a standard item that you would normally see on a consent agenda in a lot of other towns, but we do that this way here. So I'll pause for any questions or items about agendas. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jamie for department details.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. First up under Department Details is Finance, however, that report will be covered on the focus items. And then first, the next one would be Human Resource Manager Kayla Ferguson.
Good evening. If you look on the back of your department details, you'll see our list of employment opportunities.
Next is Engineering and Public Works Director Tom Cesar.
The only item I had to report tonight was basically a repeat from two weeks ago. We have a contract with SAC to do some relining of some compromised metal storm pipes at various locations. I provided them to you on your, on the written update tonight, but I'll repeat them again. They are at six oh nine Ridgefield Drive, nine forty Medie Avenue, city's operations facility at sixty-one Clay Pit Road, five five four Dove Street, nineteen ten Bowlin Road. That work will be beginning on Ridgefield Drive this week on Wednesday. Probably should take about within, be completed within two weeks, all these, all these projects.
Mr. Cesar, the, I've noticed some work going along Georgia Avenue with digging up holes and have a trencher out there. It was down along below Martin Town Road, and then today they were up above Martin Town Road, almost up by the police station. What, what is all that work?
That's underground utility work, I believe. I'm not sure whether that's AT&T or Comcast. That work's being done under a permit issued by the South Carolina DOT.
Not the city?
That's not the city.
Thank you. Next up is Planning and Development Director Tommy Paradise.
Good evening, council. As normal, we'll have the planning commission third Wednesday of the month, which is next Wednesday.
Next is Public Services Director James Sutton.
Good evening. We started last week in sanitation collecting residential yard waste. We sent out a notification that it was going to be a normal process, but it's not been that normal, not from what we've dealt with in the past. And what I mean by that is, is we have a lot of customers who have accumulated a lot of yard debris while our staff and the contractors were removing the heavy storm debris. Their yard waste was steadily piling up, and unfortunately, we were having to bypass that yard waste during that cleanup effort. Now that we restarted, we noticed our crews last week, they were lagging to complete their daily routine task of servicing everybody on like Monday's route, Tuesday, and so on, folks and forth from there. They were getting overloaded at some of the residential locations that had basically a twenty-yard container full of debris in their front yard. In the same, there was a lot of mixed debris that's still out there. It's got construction, metal, leaves, limbs, all blended together. And in some cases, they're taking out the limbs where they can, and others, they're leaving and having to move forward because of the timeline it would take to separate a pile with a customer. So what we're going to do moving forward is, is we're going to, the large piles is going to take up one trailer at one residential location. We're going to remove some portion of the pile, place notification on the customer's door, advise them that we are coming back. We ain't forgot about you, but maybe back that Friday when we're closed, we're going to work a crew, it may be a Saturday, it may be a Sunday, because our crews are going to continue working seven days up until July the first. And we'll reevaluate things on the first of July. We're hoping that we can get back to some kind of normalcy, and we will at some point in time. We just ask that the customers be patient, to which most part they have. And we are coming to get your stuff to clean your yards. But on the same, we do ask customers to please separate their piles, take the leaves and put them in one pile, the limbs in another, or your metals in another, and try to avoid placing construction material, stuff out there by the roadway that we won't pick up. And in the same, trying not to put the stuff in the curb and gutter. We find a lot of that. When you ride up the roads, there's a lot of debris in the curb and gutter. And what happens on the heavy rainstorm, the leaves, limbs, they clog the storm drain.
James, let me ask you. I have a friend on Jackson Avenue, and I'm going to ask Barbara, what is Charlene's address? But it's not in front of her house. It is across the street, and I don't know who owns that property. All right, but it's, it's, yeah, it's had some, I went by last week to see it. It does have some wires, but they're not, they're just wires down in it. But, but she had questioned about that. Now, like I said, it's not in her yard. It's across the street. So I don't know if that's, I'm sure that's debris from the storm. I don't know. And I thought, Jim, did I send that to you of those pictures? But I don't know if I did or not. I can't remember.
I have to go back to you. If council needs any lot of pictures, not a lot of.
Yeah, I know. I send you a lot of pictures, Donna, and a lot of messages. Okay, okay, all right, all right. Yeah, all right. So if you could just, likewise, where the snow cap is, probably go about three blocks, and it's on the left on Jackson.
We'll have our crews checking.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, to touch on what you said, we.
She's very nice about it. I mean, she's not racing cane, but it does look bad. But I'll tell her that, that you'll have somebody come by. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And our crews are picking up stuff that's on right away in front of vacant lots to keep the city in all clean and presentable. Storm debris as well, the country club property, the old tennis court club sustained some heavy damage by a fallen tree. If all goes well, we may or may not have to adjust the timeline, but we anticipate we're going to have a crew on site around their Saturday taking out that facility that was damaged, getting rid of it, disposing of it. On the wastewater rehabilitation project, it's been ongoing for quite some time now. I just want to give an overview on the current status of some activity that recently took place on the project. Back in two thousand twenty-two, the city was awarded a seven-point-six million dollar grant from the Rural Infrastructure Authority that was funded by ARPA. Well, we selected some of the most critical pipelines in our collection system, which are interceptors that run from the Rapid Subdivision parallel to the river, across country, all the way over to around where our operations facility is at Clay Pit Road. So over twenty thousand feet of pipe, one hundred and twenty manhole to be rehabilitated. On average, that pipe conveys about one point three five million gallons a day of wastewater to the Aitken County Public Service Authority, which is a lot of water. There's a bunch costly pipes to repair. They were installed in the fifties. Well, moving forward, that project costs around four point seven million. So we still have some funding left over, but it wasn't funding that they just outright give you, although it was allocated to you on the front. You had to work to get it. Well, I can tell you, with Mr. Clifford's support, his presentation on these projects, I'm fit to present to you, he did an exceptional job procuring the remaining funding. One of the projects is Carolina Springs Lift Station. It was installed in the early fifties. It conveys and pumps wastewater for Crestland Subdivision and Summerfield and some of the surrounding houses up along Carolina Springs Road. They approved that project for the replacement of the equipment only, and city crews are going to install. going to install the station. In addition, he procured a $2 million project in Cresslin and the Bunning and Summerfield Subdivisions to rehabilitate well over 23,000 feet of 8-inch vitriolic clay pipe that was also installed in the early 50s and early 60s. That process is going to take up till about April of 2026 to complete that project. Overall, the city's coming out pretty good with the infrastructure financially. It's a good start in contribution to our rehabilitation of our aid system, and projects right now are moving forward and going well.
Thank you, James, that's all great stuff.
Mr. Sutton, the new material handling facility that we opened up, how's it going?
It's going well. We're, the crews have learned the process of mobilizing the trailers in and out, and moving them off the wall, and, you know, just keeping things shuffled around. So it's been a little bit of a learning curve for them on the front end, but it's like anything else, they'll pick it up and be very productive and efficient, you know, getting everything done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Public Safety Chief Johnson.
Good evening. As many of y'all are aware, we had a storm system come through Saturday evening, knocked down trees, had multiple roads blocked. We had trees in houses, trees on power lines on fire through various parts of the city. We called out additional manpower to handle this so that we could get it all open. We had about all the roadways back open in about two hours. I know some people, it was much longer time than that to get their power restored. And then when we completed ours, the Aiken County Sheriff's Office Duty Supervisor was monitoring our radio and heard us say we had our items taken care of, and asked us to come assist them, and we went down into Clearwater and helped them with the project down there as well while we were out.
Down at the bottom of Cherokee?
It was at the top end of Cherokee, near Highway One.
The highway here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, my mama thanks you.
All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Parks and Rec Director Rick Meyer.
Good evening. We are excited to announce that Tuesday, June 17th, at 11:00 a.m., we have a ribbon cutting at Creighton Park Playground. Long overdue, that will be a lot of fun there. Number two on my list, as a result of the storm Saturday night, we had the Greenway team come together Sunday morning, and we closed the Greenway down on social media, and this will be our new policy after a storm like that. We will close it down until we have a chance to go out, clean it up, and inspect it, make sure that it's safe. And we appreciate the Greenway team being able to do that for us. South Carolina High School League Girls Basketball has a live team camp this Thursday through Saturday at Riverview Park. College coaches will be coming to town. We should get some economic impact off that. The following weekend, we'll have the boys in town, so those are two good events for the Activity Center.
Explain that to me.
Sure, sure. So every state in the country in the month of June goes to high school team camps, okay? And the NCAA makes it a live period where the college coaches can go to these states and watch high school teams versus what you're going to see in July in the Peach Jam, where you see league youth basketball teams that are more like All-Star teams from all over the place.
Is this new?
In the last five years, they started this. Yep, second, second year it's been at North Augusta.
Oh, been in North Augusta, I mean.
Do what now?
It's new to us in North Augusta.
Second year here, yes. Mm-hmm. Absolutely, yes. There is an admission charge, yes. Mm-hmm. And the other thing that we have going on this week, we have the Antonio Grant Youth Basketball Camp going on, and next week, we have that Pat Carpenter Cheer Camp. Last update I have for you is Living History Park, and I'm going to give you the best that I can. The city has completed filing claims with the South Carolina Municipal Insurance. We're in the process of getting those claims and checks turned back into the city. They've done all their inspections, so we're gaining on it there. The Old Town Preservation Association Board has sought bids from five contractors for the park repairs, and they're in the process of reviewing their quotes that they've gotten back. I think three of the five have responded back to them. I'm also working with Jason Sykes, Superintendent of Sanitation, and our representative for FEMA, I met with FEMA, and we're working on providing them with the details of these quotes for potential mitigation if needed for Living History Park repair. No exact timeline, but we're getting very closer to the beginning of construction repairs at Living History Park.
Rick, a couple of quick questions for you. I noticed Curtis Park is still closed. What is your, do you have any kind of a opinion about the park itself? There's not much there.
Yeah.
The fence is damaged.
Correct.
What should we do with that space?
It's a pocket park, is what I like to call it, a little neighborhood park, not something that, you know, it's good to have green space, and we actually have that provided in all the new developments that you see across the city. I prefer to, to invest in our larger parks like Creighton Park, Leroy Hammond Park, Riverview Park, Summerfield Park than I would at a Curtis Park. I think the green space component is nice, but, you know, the fence repair won't be much, but the playground equipment is very old. You know, it's kind of needs to either be replaced or taken out.
I noticed there's a tree there with a marker in front of it, and I failed to stop to see what the marker is. Is that an Arbor Day tree planting at some point?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. I, I don't remember, yeah, I've never been, I've never seen anybody at the park. I just, I don't know whether it's worth our investment to continue having that park or find a different, a different setup for the, for the space. I know there's a picnic table, a sandbox, and a swing.
Correct, that's it.
The sandbox is loose, I would, I would say that's a loose description of that.
Okay.
Well, we could put some benches, you know, I don't, to my knowledge, there's not a lot of children in that area. But, you know, put some benching, like, you're out walking, you want to stop, read on your book, or, you know, that might be something good for that little, because it's very small.
Very small park. I think once upon a time, you mentioned this, that there was a large group of young kids there. Still think there's, that's there anymore.
See, most of those people, like myself, live in that area, have been there all their life, and it's getting old.
Yeah.
But, but it is a pretty little place, it is. Like I said, that could be something, you know, it's not play for children.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Because we do have the park at the end of Curtis, you know, that part, so I mean, that, I don't know why that was really built. That was for my farm.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth the effort for us to continue to maintain that facility at that level.
Right.
We either need to go up or do something else there. Okay. Second, second question I had, I got a question on fishing on city lakes, city ponds.
Yes.
Do we still permit that?
Yes, you have to have a South Carolina fishing license, first and foremost, and then if you have one of those, you need to come by Riverview Park Activity Center and get a city fishing permit. Very inexpensive, front desk can help you, I think it's $2. We have limited facilities in the city. You can fish at West Pond, Brick Pond Park, you can fish at the, off the piers, at the boat ramp. You can also fish, there's a small pond off Jackson. And then the fourth, there's a little pond off the Greenway, just past Cypress and Hammond Hill Swimming Pool. You just have to be careful there to make sure you're on city property and not the residence property.
Yes.
Well, the one on Jackson Avenue, and I'm sure, I've had two call that I hadn't sent you on that yet, one of, you know, that needs to be cleaned up.
I've got that same call, and I have had a conversation with Roy Kibler, property maintenance, it's on the list, it's just down the list.
Well, I'll write this lady back to me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to close out Department Details is Tourism Manager Carl Waldorf.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I just want to give you a couple of updates. One, community center, we had some contractors complete interior painting of the ballroom, common areas, and kitchen, community center last week. So it's got a good fresh coat of paint on it, looks really good. And we also had an electrical contractor come through and change most of all the lighting fixtures that were, that were dated and dysfunctional and all that, so made it, made a big difference. And also let you know, we have some new flooring that's scheduled to be installed around mid-July. So that's, it's going to give a good, good freshen up to the community center, which has been needed for a little while. Second thing I wanted to remind you of is a week from Thursday on the 19th at 4:00 p.m. at the corner of Carolina and Jackson Avenues, we're having our ribbon cutting, unveiling, if you will, of our new trolley, and as well as making a note of the new historical markers can be there for the trolley stop that was in a, in that area, active from about 1909 to late 1920s. So Village Murray, one of our citizens, did a lot of good work in making that happen.
Now, Carl, I've got a pro, a new project for you.
Yes, ma'am.
With the trolley.
Sure.
Years ago, and I'm going to come in, Rick Myers' wife, Beth, when she taught SOAR, you know, the children that scored very high.
Yes, ma'am.
She did a field trip around North Augusta in the school bus, though, to different, you know, you're talking about exploring. She, like, they'd go to the old Sunset Hill Cemetery, you see James U. Jackson's grave, I mean, those is over there, you know? Also, just like the marker and all these things, she, that was a field trip. They went to different historical areas in North Augusta, a group of children. So I think that would be something to bring back by, I mean, bring back that, you know, the city could do that far, it doesn't have to be the real smart kids, it could be anybody, you know, a school field trip with the trolley.
Yes, ma'am, the new trolley's going to open up all kinds of good possibilities for it.
Yeah, all kinds, oh, isn't it? Watch out.
The school district's always a good partner to ours, so. Appreciate the input, thank you.
Carl, Carl, the, the process, the process for reserving the trolley for using it for groups, is that through you, through the community center?
Well, we've kind of taken a different direction here the past year and a half, two years. It's not so much for private use, we use it for city functions, public transit, is the direction we're going with it. So we've kind of got now the wedding and private business, a little bit of it. So just so it's available to our citizens, a little.
Councilman, just to answer that as well, you know, decision we made at administration was, we need to really have two fully functional trolleys at any one time to make sure that we're going to have private rentals, because the primary thing we have to have is the trolley available for Thursdays and for other recurring events that the city participates in. And right now, we have one really good trolley, which is going to get the ribbon cut for it next week, and then we've got two trolleys that are in various states of repair and are older and aren't really super reliable. And so what we don't want to do is overcommit one of our assets at the expense of city-sponsored events. So what's currently funded in CPST 5 is the second trolley, and I would certainly envision a point where we have two fully functioning trolleys to be able to move back to a model where one would be running for your private events and those kinds of things. But we're pretty stingy on renting out the trolley at this point in time, because we want to make sure that when the city sponsors an event, that the trolley's available and, you know, working.
Thank you.
Now, hold on one minute, Kevin, I got one more suggestion for Rick Myers. Talking about James U. Jackson, when you go to that cemetery, I mean, you have to walk the whole cemetery unless you know where it is. So I did that, there wasn't a little marker, not as big as this paper. Founder of North Augusta, that's it. Now, I have talked to his family, and I think we need to do, and since the city keeps up that cemetery, do something, you know, something bigger, that you don't have to search the whole cemetery to find his grave. I mean, because without James U. Jackson, we all wouldn't be here. Okay, so Rick, look into that for me. And I know his relatives that are still living, distant relatives.
Great idea.
Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Administrator Mr. Clifford.
All right, so if you would, Ricky or Jamie, go ahead and queue up our development update. So what I wanted to do is, in discussions with Mayor Williams, I presented a version of this back in the Chamber of Commerce in early March, some of the council members seated at the dash were present at that update. But really, what the mayor wanted to have was a repeat of this event, so that it's at least on video, and that, you know, you can refer to it for citizens. I would ask our council members to hold questions to the end, because there's a lot of material in here, so if you have questions, you're going through, just go ahead and jot those down, and we'll get to the end, and I'll, if we have to scroll back through any of the slides, we'll go ahead and do so. But I'll go ahead. So before we go to the next slide, this is strictly my view of the world in that the government has a role in development, and that's your private, commercial development. But I look at, you know, four lines of effort that the city of North Augusta has, the first being public safety, second being infrastructure, third being quality of life, and last being governance. And so for, based on my experience overseas, if you don't feel safe walking out of your front door, if you feel like things, bad things are going to happen where you go, it's really hard to build upon that. So public safety is one of those foundational elements you have to have in order to have a successful community. The other thing you have to have is solid infrastructure. And so again, at the end of the day, you have to make sure that, you know, your citizens have all the viable things that are not necessarily flashy, but are essential to the governance of your city. And so the water's got to come out of the tap and turn the faucet on, the toilets have to flush, the roads have to be functional, and stormwater has to flow off to places where it's not causing major problems in the city itself. And then on top of those areas, you build your quality of life programs, which are through our Parks and Rec and Tourism, our areas where I think the North Augusta City really shines. And then lastly, you also have to have good governance, and, you know, you are a part of that is our city council, but also goes across things like the planning commission, the BZA, and the tools that the city council approves for the usage within the city itself. So I look at those as kind of a four lines of effort in how the city moves development efforts, and again, these are to spur private actions, so you have to have government actions underpinning those, but eventually you'll have private actions that go on top of that. Next slide. So I'll start with public safety, and so, you know, obviously, public safety's been around for a long time here in the city, but I'm going to cover some of the recent items here. So Fire Station 1 is something that a number of the council members here participated in, and so this came about from the concern that we had about being able to have aerial apparatuses being able to be dispatched to the higher buildings in Riverside Village, in our downtown corridor, Crown Plaza Hotel, and so you've got to have the ability to dispatch that. And so we used to have to have the aerial apparatus at Fire Station 3, because the old Fire Station 1 and Public Safety Headquarters, the bays, they're not entry and exit, they're, you know, the back end of them, and the length of those bays limited what you could put into those apparatus base. And so because of that, and lastly, the location of the old Public Safety Headquarters of Fire Station 1 was much closer to the river, and ultimately, you want to have as close to a 360-degree pattern around your fire station, be able to dispatch in that directions, and when you push that close to the river, or to the edge of your town, you really aren't getting 180 degrees. So this gave us a lot better penetration to the neighborhoods, and also, this was a great project for us, and quite frankly, it really was essential for us as we went into Hurricane Helena operations, because this was the site of our first emergency operation center before we jumped in here to the Palmetto Terrace upstairs. Next slide. Public Safety Headquarters, again, the city does a great job and is very fiscally conservative in a lot of ways, and so it's been kind of recycling a lot of city facilities, so courts and CID were in older buildings as well as Public Safety Headquarters itself, and certainly went well beyond the useful lifespan of those buildings. And so we went through with the city council a number of iterations about where the headquarters is going to be and what the design is going to look like, but ultimately, that headquarters is, as you see there above on Georgia Avenue, and we had promised that it was going to be operational a little in the next week of 2025. Next slide, and we certainly met that. So we had the ability to get in there on March 2nd. We'd actually started the process of moving parts of the headquarters in there before Christmas time, but Chief Johnson, a good show leadership, did not move the rank and file into that building until the dispatch, not in one aspect, was available, so he can move the rank and file over there. But we did get to do a start of the shakeout in December with the CID. But we did get to do a start of the shakeout in December with the CID personnel upstairs along with the Courts personnel as they moved over to start doing court actions there in January. Next slide. Also, Public Safety, we've got a new Fire Truck 8, which is the air and light truck. The city council approved that action, and that allows us to, or Chief, to fill up Scott packs or air packs there at the scene of a fire, a structure fire. That's the big difference between this truck and road truck. Road truck just moved the canisters between the headquarters and the fire itself, and they had to bring it back to Fire Station 2 to refill. This allows them to do it on site. It also has a light bar up there, so for accident investigations or doing other things in the evening time, it's a much better capability. It's a great asset, and I believe Chief's going to show it off to a number of other folks here in the state later this week for a conference in Miller Beach. And then the city council also approved a measure using CPST 5 to lifecycle replace the older apparatus that we have. So that involves an engine and two of our aerials and discussion about long-term fire needs. But essentially, we've got the ability to move forward now on a contract for replacement apparatus that needs to be replaced on a more regular timeframe, and that includes the 1981 ladder truck that we've become fond of discussing. Next slide. We've also made certain investments in our equipment. So we've updated our 911 dispatch software. The old software we had was really kind of together with billing, our bubble gum, and it was not a great system. And as we've talked about with software, I mean, just because something works today doesn't mean it's going to work tomorrow. And we were beyond the useful lifespan of our previous 911 dispatch software, and certainly we're in, at risk of having to go to a manual dispatch process. So luckily for us, we were able to use ARPA and Capital Project Sales Tax 2 funding to go ahead and fund SmartCop, which is the same software I believe that the Highway Patrol uses where I'm going to stay in South Carolina. You also, as the council approved the budget last year to allow us to transfer, transition from 45 caliber to 9mm handgun, something that the chief has been asking for for a while, and to include the previous chief, and we got that there. You see some of the other items that are listed that were recent investments. And then also, it's not just about equipment, it's about your personnel and training, which Chief certainly has responsibility for. And that involves, you know, meeting the highest national standards, so being able to be clearly nationally certified for our Public Safety Department's important. We make investments in our senior leadership. Captain Sherman just recently graduated from the FBI Academy at Quantico, the establishment of the CAT team, getting additional grant officers, and also having pride to be able to say that every single school that's in the city limits of North Augusta has a School Resource Officer at that school. So again, we want to be able to have a value proposition of, hey, why is it better to live in the city limits of North Augusta than outside the city limits? And those are some of the reasons, at least from a public safety perspective. Next slide. Now we'll move into the infrastructure line of effort, and we'll talk through some of this. Next slide. So this is a philosophical view, but I would tell you that when infrastructure fails, you know, whether it's in the water system or in the wastewater system or in stormwater system, at the end of the day, that's not a problem that was created in a matter of days. That is a problem that transpires over multiple administrations, multiple staffs, multiple councils, multiple elected officials, where those officials take a very short view of a problem set as opposed to a long view, and what happens then is you end up having failure. So that's not a finger pointing at any particular political class or decision-making that was occurred, but I just use that to highlight that it's very easy to fund something that is visible and immediate as opposed to something that is long-term and a requirement but may end up having value and benefit long beyond your tenure as an elected official. Next slide. So here's an example of a project that BPW led, and we got some additional funding, grant funding to assist with that of Rose Arpa. And so this is part of the Pope Range. This doesn't cover the entire Pope Range basin, but it does cover the upper portion closer to Interstate 20. And so we had a major issue that started in 2020. Next slide. And you can see a great picture there. So the yellow dot is the same location, just in two different pictures. And you can see where we had really a twofold problem. You had a stormwater issue that caused erosion that exposed our wastewater system and our sewer pipes there. And now what you see on the tail end of that there is, you know, what that looks like with a much more stable stormwater system. And this is all kind of just north of the Russian Water subdivision, but that also stabilizes our wastewater system as well. So kind of get a two for one in this particular project. Next slide. And so this is an old picture, obviously, but you can see there on the top left of that photo, that is the Russian Waters pre-phase 2 portion. And since that period of time, you know, where the culverts are, has now been filled in, has now been paved, and is now moving over to phase 3 for the rest of the Russian Water subdivision, which is right on the back end of the valley over there. And so we had good partnership with the developer to be able to, you know, have them take a pause so we could finish this project out before they went forward. So that worked out really well for us. Next slide. This is a James Sutton-led project. This is the Clay Street Pump Station. This is the heartbeat of our water system. So think about the water system that you see down by the SACRA complex. That's where we draw the water from the river. That's where the brain of the operation is, and that's where, you know, the treatment of the water occurs. That's where all the, kind of the math happens. But the Clay Street Pump Station, which is in the vicinity of Fire Station 1, is a key component of that. As a matter of fact, when we had Hurricane Helene, our number one priority for power restoration was to this site, to make sure that we maintained water pressure throughout the city because we saw what happens when you lose water. So ultimately, this is a project that's going well. The council has visibility to this project because there are resolutions that the council has passed to fund this with, you know, some city money and some other money. And so ultimately, this project is just getting closer to completion. The actual new pump apparatus was delivered last week, and so some installation will be going on over the next couple of weeks. So I would say that by Labor Day weekend, we should have a complete Clay Street Pump Station ongoing. So it's a good project for us. Next slide. And as James talked about, I think this is really a three-in-one project. This really, we got a lot of extra traction on this that I did not initially envision when we put in for this project through the Rural Infrastructure Authority. And so what you see there in green and red, which makes a horseshoe essentially, is the interceptor pipe project, and that is what's currently ongoing. And those dudes came in below estimates, which is a good story. James then put together a change order, so I'll go ahead to the next slide. Go back one second. Oh, one more. Go forward. There you go. I'll get it right yet. There you go. That's exactly the side I wanted to be on. Okay. So we also got a change order approved, so that's the lift station, Carolina Springs Lift Station that James talked about. And then we just got word last week that James talked about as well, which is the eight-inch pipe rehab. We'd asked the city council to set aside $300,000 as a potential grant match, and I would tell you, based on the speed of the council's action, we were able to demonstrate to RIA that we were serious about moving forward with a change to that project, which will include eight-inch pipe, and they granted our request last week. So James is going to get working on that to get that fully vetted out with RIA and then get bid out for action. And those projects are going to have to be done by 1 June of 2026. We also got the material recovery facility. This is, again, making lemonade out of lemons. We had a major fire there, there in 2021, and that was not a great event for us, and I feel bad for, not just for James' group but for Public Safety, as opposed to enjoying Thanksgiving dinner that day. We got called in in mass because you have a major structure fire going, along with some volunteer helpers from, and other fire departments came in and assisted as well to help us extinguish that blaze. And so because of that, we had the opportunity to modernize and upgrade that facility using insurance money, so we didn't even have to go back for general funds to do that. Next slide, please. And there you can see some of the used equipment that we brought from Dumpster Depot inside a new facility that's there, which allowed us to move back into the recycling program, which we had to suspend. So for the historical folks here, we had a move program, then we had a pre-bag program, and we suspended it. But this is a much more modern program. We have a ballistic separator and allows us to not have to do a manual intervention. And the original, we first stood up to use prison labor, and essentially, that labor's not available anymore. So this really solved the problem for us, and now we're going to be able to conduct a recycling program. Next slide. And many of you are out there for the transportation ribbon funding. I've been out to that facility. We view that as a revenue line. We have yet to see what that's going to look like because we just opened, but that will help defray some of the costs associated with these outpatient fire city residents. This is a good project. This was funded through the Department of Energy Plutonium Settlement Funds, $2 million, and it's a great facility and a great outdoor operations center. Next slide. We're also aware of some of the GDOT projects. And so as you all know by now, that George DOT has completed the Savannah River Bays. This started right about the time I got stationed here at Fort Ben Gordon. Took a number of years, but they finally wrapped it up this year. And so now what you have is a completed element of, you know, new updated bridge work that's three lanes across, all the way across to Exit 1 in South Carolina, which is here in North Augusta. Next slide. The next GDOT project that we're aware of that's going to affect North Augusta is the 13th Street Bridge Project. This was something that's been in the works for a long time. And so because of the time delays associated with the earlier GDOT project, the Interstate 20 Bridge Project, and also because of cost factors, they've postponed the current contract construction start until 2028. And because then here it gets 2025, and they're saying it's going to start in 2028, I would certainly envision that that might be flexible. It may go beyond that. But we're going to start from a planning perspective, saying that, hey, we understand that the 13th Street Bridge will restart as early as 2028, but certainly no earlier than that right now. And the completion date being 2032. Again, the reason why that project's going to take a while is, much like the Interstate 20 Bridge, we're not going to allow them to shut down all lanes of traffic, to completely shut down the bridge itself. We have to leave one lane open per direction, mostly for emergency vehicles, because obviously the trauma centers over in Augusta between West Tower Piedmont and the other hospital systems, we have to be able to make sure that emergency vehicles can transit the 13th Street Bridge. And so we are not allowing them to, and Augusta feels the same as well, so we're not allowing them to close the bridge completely. So that's going to make that project go longer than if we had allowed them to have four lanes over the bridge itself. Next slide. So we've had multiple discussions on this, but that's what's informing us on our timeline associated with Georgia Avenue pedestrian and traffic safety studies and movements that we have. So if we're going to work on the Georgia Avenue corridor, we want to get those projects started, and we want to get them finished later than 2028. We're very confident that if we continue to move on the pace that we are, that we have no risk of bumping up against the 13th Street Bridge Project. But I would like to move at as expeditiously as possible if this is the council's guidance to move forward. So again, we're working right now. We've awarded a contract to Kenley Horn, which is the Umbrella Contract for Transportation, Study and Planning and Engineering. And so ultimately, they're going to do some work with us, with Tom Zeaser and Planet Paradise, to be able to refine some of those numbers, and we'll come back to the city council at that point in time with a contract in mind to approve to do some work. Next slide. And then the cherry on top really is the quality of life for our citizens. Next slide. Put a lot of effort on the Greenway. You can see what Rick just talked about with the Greenway team. And I've just got a montage here of a number of different projects. You've got some that are privately assisted with, some that are governed, so off-sense either. We've got the New York Project, which is fairly close here to City Hall. You've got the Bathroom Project, which was done in conjunction with North Augusta Forward and City Cruise to add there at the Hammond Hill Pool Complex. We have a small extension over to Mayfield Drive there near H. Ford County. And then you've also got the Downtown Greenway Connector, Bluff Avenue, that was fed through CPST 4. And lastly, Tom Zeaser's project, the ladders to replace the old crushed wooden bridge behind the old Public Safety Headquarters with a new metal-engineered contact bridge, which is a great addition to the Greenway itself. Next slide. I would also tell you, I'm very proud of the fact that we have been able to entice the Iron Man course to participate here in North Augusta. So that started a few years ago with the start of the swim event over in front of the Crown Plaza in SRP Park. And that was even before we finished our dock project, but now that's done, that gives them an extra anchor spot to go for. They had a great experience starting the race in SRP Park and from the dock side there. And so they wanted to recreate that. And then based on the feedback they got from the runners and just being out there in the sun all day, and they were looking for some other options for the run portion. And so this past year, if Hurricane Helene had not occurred, they were going to run the Iron Man on the Greenway as far as the majority of the run portion. And my understanding is, in initial dialogue with the Iron Man organization, Augusta's press council, that they're likely to request the same usage here in September. Next slide. Again, great work by our team. Roy Kibbe in particular helped put together the RFP request for proposals on this. And sometimes when you're going through these processes, you're not sure if you're doing exactly the right thing or not, but I think it was a good strategy to have one contractor working and focusing on debris on the roads, and having a different contractor focusing on the Greenway and chipping and cutting as they go. And so our trade company, I would be for Georgia, who also worked at the North Augusta National Post Hurricane Helene, turned out to be a great partner, and were able to get us open a lot faster than Silver Path and a number of other cities in South Carolina as well. Next slide. So again, we got that done kind of as a Christmas present to North Augusta last year, to have the Greenway fully opened end to end. Next slide. And we're also making significant improvements in downtown Riverside Village corridor. So you can see there on the top, some items aren't super high-cost, so just little things like putting lights in the trees really makes a difference, and you see that there down in Riverside Village and also on Georgia Avenue. Also, some of the hardscape improvements that you see there by the formerly known as Medak Building on Bluff Avenue as well, removing some of the very, very small edge of grass that's in between the sidewalk and the curb and making those pavers, much like you have on West Avenue. That gives us a nice touch. And then you also have the Dock and Amphitheater Project, which recently won an award for current state engineering in the state of Georgia for just engineering excellence. Next slide. And lastly, governance is one of those things also that businesses and developers and just citizens kind of expect to be able to work well and in their favor. And so ultimately, you know, you know, as the council have done a number of different things, one of them being the update to the Development Code. That's one of those things where, you know, things change over time, and it's worth the work. I know a number of our council members participated as members of that committee and made, put a lot of work into that, and then got us to a workable product, and then allowed us to publish a new Development Code. Next slide. The city also implemented a apartment moratorium, which does not affect the apartment complexes that are part of planned developments. So things like the Hive or Adelaide, those and those Highland Spoons are not affected by this, but standalone apartment complexes and general commercial or seven lots are outlawed for now until we go through the overall master plan. And then we also have an ongoing discussion right now about impact fees. The city council hasn't taken action on that as of yet, but we certainly received the update from Carson Vice about the potential of impact fees, and I believe that's going to be up for consideration for the city council in the end of July. Excellent. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the active developments. Next slide. So Riverside Village is certainly an ongoing work, and so here's some articles to talk about. And we negotiated with South City Partners, which is a development group out of Georgia. And so we did about a six-month-long negotiation about them taking over some of the parcels for Riverside Village and what that would look like, and that was successfully negotiated and the city council approved the updates there. Next slide. And so what you have, anybody can drag down Riverside Village today and see that there are, you know, three major projects going on across four parcels of land. So to start at the top right of your screen at the 2 o'clock, that's Parcel C directly across from the stadium. That's Apartments Over Retail. That's currently going vertical. And according to South City Partners, they believe we're going to have that largely completed by the end of this year. Then if you go down to the bottom of the screen, you've got Parcels G and H, which have been combined, and that is a Apartments Over Retail setup as well. My understanding is they have a restaurant concept in mind for the area that's facing the amphitheater. And then on the top left of your screen there, Parcel K is strictly apartments. That's closer to Hammond's Ferry. Next slide. And that's a picture in the rendering of what those are supposed to look like upon completion. But of those, the bottom item there in Parcels G and H, you can drop down past the Crown Plaza there and see what the building is going to really look like. So they're working on the commercial aspect now, but the residential piece, you can see pretty well what that's going to look like upon completion. Next slide. Excellent. We also have development here in the downtown corridor. And right now that's anchored right around City Hall, which is Beacon Bluff. So you've got the Augusta Oncology purchased the formerly known as Medak Building across the street from us for about $12 million. In addition to that, Augusta Oncology put a lot of money into the building. We had a ribbon cutting here with the Lieutenant Governor who came in town and to do that. And that's going to bring a lot of foot traffic and other traffic here in the North Augusta as a viable business. And then as you can see there, Beacon Bluff, which is the building directly behind City Hall, should be opening fairly soon, but certainly by the summer I'd imagine will be ready to go. Excellent. Some of the residential items that we have here, I'm just going to circle and go through a few. We've got some smaller projects and some larger projects. Your Forest Bluff is a larger project, and that's a project that is an extension, if you will, of an existing project over there in Norwood. And so that goes through the backside of that, and that's ongoing today. You've got Civil Bluff, which is a very small project that has large lots on the river. You've got, you know, opposite Riverside Village area there. You've got Bluegrass Place. City Council, if you recall, have met with the developer here in Open Chambers about a concept there between Martin Town and East Buena Vista. And that's going to be a corporate owned setup, but it's going to have a mixture of apartments, townhomes, and single family. That's going to be for renter from the company, so no owner occupied there. And then also River Phase 4 is ongoing and those site homesteads are largely complete and be ready for construction here pretty soon. Excellent. There's an awful lot happening at Exit 1. So if you go to Martin Town Road and you go northbound from Interstate 20, starting at the right top there, you've got Gregory Landing, Phase 3. And so they're currently building on the backside of that project, and that's going well. They already have several houses over vertical in that development. And then you also have Martin Town Ridge, which you can drive and just see right from Martin Town Road itself. And so they have grading completed and they've started to stub in a lot of the lots. So I imagine that'll be going vertically here pretty soon. You've got the formerly known as River Falls Apartments, now called The Parkers. And that is what tripped in a good way, having a requirement for a traffic right at Martin Town and Abcombe, which is currently there and functioning. So The Parkers is almost complete, but they're still going through the last couple of buildings. And then you also have The Hive, which is basically a three-part development where you're going to have a commercial component on the west side of that. So right by the Raptor House and facing Martin Town Road, you're going to have a multifamily component in the middle. You're going to have single family homes there on the east side that extends behind the high school and eventually connects into Pennon Road over to Aitken County. And then you've also got Renfield, Chanaclaire. And you know, it's funny, it's until Hurricane Helene happened, I really hadn't spent a whole lot of time on the backside of that neighborhood, but you can really see how much they've created and what they're going to be building out there. And it's a pretty significant size, you know, add to the city with 123 single family homes. Excellent. So here's a better representation of The Hive. You can see what that looks like there. The dark brown is the, the commercial components. And you can see where the road network is and how it eventually ties into Pennon Road. There on the right side of the screen shows some of the details associated with how many units are going to be there, how much square footage of commercial space. But again, they had a groundbreaking ceremony, the site work is ongoing at that site. And I would imagine what you're going to see is construction happening in the, in the commercial zone and also in the multifamily first. Excellent. And also Exit 5 is developing like crazy. So you've got on the very north end of town, a renacode section 13, 50 townhomes, 92 single family residences. And you can see part of that development directly from Five Notch Road, if you go north or on Five Notch. You've got sweetware townhomes, which are still ongoing. You've got the Village Square townhomes, which are behind the Holiday and Express over Exit 5. And then also along Austin Crapo, you've got Austin Heights, which is a Nebo property where that's the roads that built that. I think they might have run or two of them not still, but you can see the vast majority of that has been built out. And then Mushroom Waters, Phase 3. You saw the pictures associated with the Stormwater Project there. And so Phase 3 is now ongoing, which is on the backside of Belvedere. And then you also have commercial development that's occurring south of Exit 5. So you now have the Quick Trip that's there, Popeyes's, was a concept that came off, but now you've got The Parker's Kitchen there at the intersection. And then you have road directly across from Parker's Kitchen, which has been recently annexed into the city as general commercial. And that usage has not yet been identified, but I'm pretty sure you're going to see something here starting over the next 25 months. Excellent. And then on the right-hand side of your screen, here in the big green circle, that's had both of the names over the years. That's where the Highland Springs Middle School is. And so that was formerly known as the Highland Springs Development, and now it's known as Adelaide. And again, that's the largest single piece of contiguous property in the city limits of North Augusta, I think 1300 acres is what we're dealing with. And that's a major project that's going to be going in there. And that is going to consist of commercial on the north end and then housing. So we've had a number of items come through, planning and development. And I would say you're likely to see residential construction start closer to the middle school and move northbound from there as that project begins to take shape. Next slide. And then there's a better picture of what that looks like, and you can see where Interstate 520 comes through there. The vast majority of it being on the right side. This originally was envisioned in the original PD as a golf course, you know, community, but that didn't occur, but we were able to hold a lot of that golf course space or green space in the middle. So that was a good get for the city. Excellent. And these are the potential developments. So these are things that we've been in dialogue with developers about, but have not seen movement or may have an action waiting for us. So you've got right behind Gregory Landing, Phase 3. You can see a large piece of property. It's also known to us as the Baggett Property. That's been in some dialogue for some time. We'll see if that goes. And then some councils are involved with the discussion about the Ford Property. So on the very right hand side of your screen, kind of reverse, we're sure you there. And so we're in dialogue with that developer. And we're also in dialogue with the developer about what we call the Kellogg Track, which is the big white space there, rest of 520. And so there is some potential there that that developer, I want to try to annex it to the city of North Augusta. And I anticipate seeing something there in front of the City Council sooner rather than later. And there was also a project that we've been in dialogue with a developer at called Moe's Bluff, which is over by the Savannah Barren neighborhood. Excellent. And then we also have potential neighborhoods and developments that are going along off the East Buena Vista. So that is the space that's directly behind where the old public safety headquarters are supposed to go. And then you have an apartment complex, then you have space behind that. So that's a current development that's in play. Excellent. And we also have a lot of commercial growth. So not just residential growth, but you've got there at Exit 5, you have a Goodsmattering thing that have occurred in the last, really, two to three years. So you've got a Quick Trip. You've got a good partnership now with Aitken Regional Medical Center, where they put the standalone emergency department, that's been a real game changer for medical care for, not just for the city, but also for Hefner County. A lot of folks use that facility that come out of Aitken and Hefner County. You've got a new hotel next door to the ER called True Hotel by Hilton. And then also the expansion of Chick-fil-A by having a second location there at Exit 5. And that's been a, been a good add for that neighborhood as well. Excellent. And we've also had growth in the downtown corridor. So we were grateful to get this down, kind of reused organization out of the spaces in Aitken Tech, and they took over the old bank on Georgia Avenue and they rehabbed that. You've also got Orange Otter, you have Fleet Feet Center, and that's a one of many businesses. They're going to be part of Deacon's Bluff, which includes the old carpet shop and another right there here across the street. Excellent. So to recap, you know, the government has a role in making sure that the citizens have a good place to live, a safe place to live, and also that businesses and developers, if they choose to do business here, have something to work with. And so those, again, are four lines of effort between public safety, infrastructure, over quality of life, and governance programs, allow us to have a place that is developer and business friendly, should that be the desire of the City Council. Excellent. Okay, so I went through an awful lot of material. I appreciate our hearing your questions, and I'm happy to take any good questions at this time.
Mine's not a question. On the Public Safety Fire Station 1, you know, where it has the lettering, Fire Station 1, but you know, sort of like intended in the color, that beige, you, to me, you can't see that like you're on Martin Town Road, you know? And so I didn't know if there's any way to make that more visible to people. Does anybody notice that or?
Well, you're not the first council member to make that comment to me, councilwoman. And that's the exact same setup that we have in Fire Station 3 on Belvedere Corridor Road. And so we did have a discussion with-
Well, it seems like you can see Fire Station 3 better. I don't know. But you know, Fire Station 1 is the station, you know? And I, just ride by, just driving, walk, I mean, riding by and look and see if you can, well, that, maybe it's my vision going, I don't know.
We actually had a discussion with the general contractor and also with the design firm about that, because then former councilman Bob Brooks also made a very similar comment. And we looked at that. And so ultimately, because of the material that's being used there, we talked about potentially sharing in with, you know, paint or lettering or whatever. And ultimately, based on the designer feedback, that that wasn't going to work really well. It was going to flake and not, not adhere properly to that surface. And so we've looked at that, but we're not going to be, at least not at present time, going forward with an update to the lettering.
Because a lot of times with people, we say, Fire Station 1, you have to say Martin Town Road, you know? I think that's about all I hate.
Mr. Clifford, a lot of, a lot of development on the, on the books, or at least in the, in the future, how, how many, how far in advance, how many years do you think this is, are we looking at with this development?
Councilman, if I, if I hate to give you an answer quite frankly, because it's a, that's a, if I could look that far in the future and get that accurate, I would probably not be the city manager and I'd be, you know, getting people's way to the carnivore or something. I don't, I don't know how I'd, how I'd do justice to the question. What I would say is, as an example of how long developments can take, you know, when I first took over here in this position, and very shortly thereafter, I had a meeting with a developer about Adelaide slash Highland Springs, and came to find out that that PD had been approved back in 2001. And so here it is, we are in 2025, 24 years later, after the council approved an action. And that, that property's gone through ownership changes, gone through developer changes, gone through any number of different things. And so when the city council, the previous council, senior council, had met, Tommy Paradise or Parkings Director had gone through, and we had asked him to look through if every development that was in dialogue with the planning department came to fruition, what would the size of the city be? And the answer for that was about 32,000 people. But that doesn't even include the annexation options that are out there. And as far as time goes, that, that I couldn't tell you. I'd feel pretty comfortable in telling you though, that I think within five years, we'll be over 30,000 people. I think that's a, that's a reasonable and realistic expectation to have based on where the pace of construction and things that are happening here in the cities. And then you have to do some math associated with number of personnel associated by single family residence versus a, you know, an apartment complex. And so there's a, there's an estimate there, but until you wait until a census data number, you're not a hundred percent.
So much of the work the council has to do, I think, or tasked to do, has to deal with, are we ready for the future? And I mean, this was an eye opener for me of just how much is out there and potentially on the books. And making those decisions to a moving target in the future is very difficult, but I see that as a challenge for us and staff and council as well.
I'd agree, Councilman. I'd also say that the, you know, the decisions that you make as council, and again, I think especially when it comes to infrastructure, and I have, everybody's got their own biases on things, but I tend to look pretty heavily at infrastructure, those are investments that will pay off. I don't think you can ever really over invest in your infrastructure, and you can certainly under invest though. And so I think that a number of the council actions that I've seen since I've been seated here have been prudent ones and have taken a very long view associated with the city. And whether or not the city absorbed any more development at all, just the ability to invest in our aging infrastructure and have that life cycled and updated is really a great service to all of our citizens that currently live in the city, much less any potential new ones.
I'm encouraged by the number of people that I see growing up in the community and perhaps going to college, but coming back to live here and choosing this as a location to raise their family. I see that as a very positive thing, and I can, I can certainly see the city expanding significantly over the next 20 years.
Well, Councilman, when I was interviewed for this job in 2020, you know, my discussion, I think probably Councilman Turner and Councilman Carpenter, Councilman Carpenter were probably in the room, which was, regardless of who you pick as the city administrator for the state of North Augusta, at the end of the day, the macroeconomic factors do not change. You know, the Fort Eisenhower is growing, Savannah Riverside is growing, the Augusta University footprint is growing, the medical footprint is growing. And now you're seeing other, maybe even unanticipated growth in the region to improve the Meta Data Center there in Aitken County, some other, you know, cyber infrastructure that's going to be coming here to the, to the region. And so that builds upon itself. And those people are going to come regardless of, you know, what you do here in North Augusta, what you do get to affect those, where they choose to live. And so North Augusta is certainly a destination community, certainly amongst not just the homegrown folks, but people that are located in the area.
Very exciting time to be in North Augusta, very much.
I have a few questions. First, I'd like to say, you know, as a team, I've stated this before written, but I hope we all lean on each other for our strengths, you know? And that makes us the best possible team. I bring 32 years of working with animals to this council. I've been doing it since I was 15 years old. I have recommendations to work with animals from Elaine Vanderlin, who founded Molly's Militia right here in North Augusta 25 years ago, all the way up to the Humane Society of the United States in Washington DC. So the first thing I kind of want to get at is, with a 30-year-old pumper, a 44-year-old ladder truck, fire truck, and our pound, which exists in a maintenance building that was built in the 60s, but the compound part was converted in the 1980s, why did the previous council choose to leave public safety out of the impact fee analysis?
Well, it sounds like you're asking the City Council that question, Councilman. And I can't answer that. I can tell you that the staff, as we do, lay out the full Chinese menu of what the options are. I can't speak to the rationale of why public safety was not included in the impact fee discussion. I know that that information was provided. I think that the original view that I, at least my recollection from the council was that there was an infrastructure appetite to look at, what that was going to do from an impact fee perspective. And then based on advice we got from others, say that the Parks and Rec aspect was really being overlooked, and that would be something that would be beneficial from an impact fee perspective. I believe, if I recall in our discussion with Carson Weiss, that the police asked to understand that we're one of only a few communities here in North Carolina South Carolina that has a public safety department. So, you know, basically all the functions fall under Chief Johnson, so they don't have a separate police department, but most of the other cities do have separate segregated police and fire functions. And so in most cases, what we heard from the consultants was that there was better benefit to impact fees for fire service than there was for police service. So I couldn't answer the question about why that wasn't initially chosen, but I know that was presented.
So I do want to address the dots on this. With our current projected growth of 14,000 more people bringing us to 40,000 people six to 10 years, approximately 66% of Americans own domestic animal. That's going to bring us 9,000 more families that bring dogs and cats to our city. Our pound is not going to hold that. And while we kick the can back and forth with the county about who should take care of these animals, animals are going to start dying at our pound. We're on a knife's edge of it right now, where we've had a couple of animals that's been in there over a month, and they're just not moving. And we're seeing the average balance of animals we keep stay at a steady six to eight animals. We can't do more than 10 at a time, really, in there. And we talk about the legacy of infrastructure we want to leave. I personally, and I don't think anybody else on this council wants to leave an infrastructure level legacy that hurts animals or, or leaves them without, I mean, let's face it, domestic animals are bred for our pleasure. They're not cattle, they're not, they're not fowl, they're not bred for service. They are bred purely, and, and they're a problem caused by citizens. So that falls back on us. And I do agree with the, kind of with the stance that we pay, we pay taxes to the county and to the city with every purchase. And the county does have some responsibility in this, but while we kick the can back and forth, their life's hanging to balance, and that's not okay. We have to do the right thing by them. Where we're headed is not a good place. So that's that. Now-
Now, what can I comment on that? All right, first of all, we are, have never, since I've been in North Augusta, we have never been, have a shelter that we keep animals. We really, I guess we'd be like a holding station for a few days. But I'm going to tell you, it's coming from Aitken County. And it, you know, we can argue with them- And it, you know, we can argue with them and argue with them, but till that, Aiken County Council changes that rule, what do we get, two dogs a month over there?
That don't even take that.
They don't? But see, that, that's not City of North Augusta. And one thing I'm seeing on Facebook now, but people are not doing their responsibility. Let's say I have a dog. Well, I'm tired of old Puffy over here, I'm going to put him out in the streets. That is not the City of North Augusta's problem, I don't think. I mean, you know, I guess we could argue, I say, let's help our dogs and our cats. We all love dogs and cats, birds, anything else. But the citizens have got to take control of their animals. They've got to take control. And a lot of people, they're giving up their homes, you know, going into assisted living or something. But that, if they can't, their family needs to say, hey, I'm going to call Kevin, too, and see if he gets my animal. We cannot take in thousands of animals. We cannot.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the topic at hand really is the development piece, but I would tell you that the mayor has asked for a study session in the fall regarding animal control. So that's probably a better venue to have a discussion about, you know, kind of your requirements or the things you want to see. I think we, as a staff, certainly have a view of the problem. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the view that's going to carry today, but I think we owe you as the council, you know, some options about, you know, where animal control can go in the future. And so there's always the do-nothing option, which is what we do today, like the current state of affairs, or hey, here's a change, and here's what it would look like. And I think we owe that to the council in the future to say, hey, these are the different options that we have. But that would be a better venue to have a more structured discussion about animal control.
I think so, and I'm not prepared to answer that question, dude. It's just being honest with you at this point. We did have a consultant come. Gosh, I can't remember if that was while you were here prior to your time.
That's part of my time.
Been some time that we really haven't. I think we implemented a few changes based on those recommendations, but it's not been a focal point. So a study session certainly in the future, where we can have that discussion, understand it better, and see what the options are, is certainly warranted.
I agree, and I will, in discussion on this, I do agree that it's more the county's responsibility, but while we do nothing, we have to choose how we figure out how to hold them responsible or take care of the problems ourselves, because if we start euthanizing these animals, this dais is going to be pulled with outrage, citizen. And that's, nobody wants that. No. Okay, so I want to end that. I agree that it's probably the most respectful route to wait for this study session. But I do have a couple other questions. When we do large developments that pertain to, let's say, around the river area or the Pretty Run Basin, because we've gone over a lot of that here, anywhere that affects the water table, do we require the developers to do environmental impact studies?
I'll defer to, so every developer that comes forward has to go through both engineering and the planning and development department to do their development. So there are a number of state laws, there's also federal laws involving watersheds. And so what our staff does, councilmen, is make sure that those developers are meeting the requirements for watersheds, and then also our stormwater department analyzes their engineering plans for their stormwater discharge into, you know, various bodies of water. And I would tell you that that's usually an iterative process, in that the city count, the city does not allow developers to move forward on any kind of construction plans until it meets the regulatory requirements of the city and the state and the federal government.
Thank you, sir. One last question, because I didn't see it on the departmental reports. The roof at SRP Park, is that completed? Did that project come in on time and on budget?
Well, it's time if that's completed or not, but I don't think that's been fully closed out. I know they have done the majority of the work. So they still have some items that are left out to do for SRP Park. As far as the budget goes, I don't believe we've got all the invoicing yet for that project to know whether we're on budget or on time.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
And one more, I don't want you to think I'm against animals. I'm not, I love animals, but I'm thinking the mayor-
I'm not better than that.
I know, I'm glad the mayor's going to bring this up later for a study session. And also, one more thing, you know, last, when we allowed, well, how much money did we put in the, to do the flooring for the dog?
That was a, I believe a $6,000 line item.
Yeah, and I thought we said each year we'd add something to that to make it, but like you said, I know there's a problem, it's a problem, but-
We've got one animal control officer for 25 square miles, and it's been that way since I was a kid. We haven't expanded that at all.
Yeah, but like I said, I'm thankful you said the mayor's bringing it up.
Subtlety, any additional questions?
In a, in more of the recyclable, since we put out the blue plastic little bins, people are really, okay, all right. And then Jim, the lights on the Pretty New Bridge in 2028, will Augusta be responsible for those lights if they go with that? Because we did talk about that many moons ago, about those lights, and especially with SRP Park sitting there. Is that going to be Augusta, all of that?
I don't have a great answer for you at this point, Tom, councilman. I can tell you that the state of South Carolina, through arts funding, contributed money to that project, which included a request for the lighting aspects. But we're a long way from having a discussion about the actual mechanics of who's going to operate which lights.
All right, and one more thing for Rick. I'm, I, see, I'm not coaching, I have nothing to do, so I'm writing all over the city, finding problems. But the, up by WRDW, what is the name of that park? He might know, I can't. Oh, that's Devon Point, okay. All right, well, as I was a child, the big cedar tree that looks rough now, does look rough, we used, they used to, city put colored lights, and I know we give more to white, but you'd think there'd be any way, because that, that part of town, and especially Junior and all his little men over there, that would be to light that tree back up with the white lights like we have downtown, but on that huge, I think it's a big cedar tree, I don't know what it is. But I was just going to suggest that this Christmas. And that way, you've got the police station there and, you know, just a standout place. And that's all I got.
Anything else? All right, move on.
All right, we got one more update. We'll go to utility billing. No changes on this slide. So this, the big change on this one is, again, we're having a weekly meeting with Fire Service and Clover, which are the kind of the fiscal agents who deal with and associate with online payments. And I'm not going to bore you with the technical details, mostly because I don't think I'm smart enough to understand all the technical details, but they, they seem to have figured out a way to do a manual reconciliation of the online payments with accounts. And so Tara from our finance department's gone through and reconciled about 140 accounts. That leaves us with about 200 payments that we're tracing down to an actual user. And so I believe that will be done likely by the end of this week. And so what I've directed is not to mail out the, even though last week I talked about mailing out the May 10 bills, I would rather have those bills before reconciled with all of the online payments, before we put those in the mail. So we're going to go ahead and continue to work through the online portion, but I'm glad we at least have a technical way forward on reconciling online payments. And we have a way of doing that today, just as there was a, Cooper had an outage in that timeframe between the 9th and the 14th that we just, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't hook up. I think we've got a good way to figure that out, and also we have a good way moving forward so that if that ever happens again, there's a technical way to reconcile those payments. Excellent. Reconciliation this week, and shortly thereafter, we'll get the May 10 bills in the mail. And we're still making, ending in 5717, until we get this back on glide path. Next slide. And so, to any questions from the vice, that's all I have for updates for tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Well, with that, I really don't have any updates, so I will pass along to you guys if you've got anything you'd like to close up with.
Talked out, that's saying something. All right. With that, we adjourned.